There we go, great. Good morning, welcome to the October State Board of Education meeting. We appreciate all of you coming in today and the hard work of so many. We'll start with a moment of silence as we think about those across the nation experiencing difficulties today. Thank you. This morning, we have the Pine Bluff School District here today. Um, we appreciate you all coming in and we look forward to honoring you. I will send it to Secretary Oliva to share us.
So, good morning and, um, as Dr. Moore said, we got some representative from the Pine Bluff School District here today. Because in our schools, I truly believe that people that work with our children are heroes. And we want to celebrate and recognize those talented individuals anytime that we can. But there was an incident earlier this school year where we really truly identified a hero. And, um, what we'd like to do is, I think Stacy Smith's going to come and share a little bit of that story and meet this hero who did something that was extremely remarkable.
Yeah, so today we do have a hero amongst us and it's Carl Smith and he's sitting right here and immediately if you notice, he ducked his head. And if you went back and watched any of the news stories, he'll say that he's not the hero. But what Carl did was, there was an accident, he was driving a bus and was rear-ended by a police officer. And immediately, he ran into action. He ran through the car, tried to open the door, tried to get the police officer out of the vehicle. The vehicle was on fire, right? Um, could not get the car open, went back to the bus, retrieved a fire extinguisher, put the fire out, saving the man's life. Um, so many people today watch, wait, and don't run towards. And Pine Bluff bus driver ran towards. That's a hero. And he is a hero to someone's family, right? And so when he says no, he's not a hero. I want you to know to us, to the families, to Arkansas, to the school district, you've made people proud. And you're an example for the rest of us. He's joined today by his superintendent, Jennifer Barbary, who we know quite well, and Transportation Director, Mr. Davis, and Carl Smith. Would you guys like to come up and say a few words? Come on up.
Well, we want to say first and foremost, thank you, Mr. Smith. He makes our district so proud, but he just makes educators across the state proud and just as a person of just admirable accomplishments and just the things that you did. You don't know, Mr. Smith is a former teacher, coach, and is a retired, he's retired bus driver that's been retired driving a bus for us for 14 years now. And so he did really retire, did you? But, um, I just want to say that thank you today for taking the time to really recognize the qualities of our educators in the state and the qualities of everyone who's there for our students. And so I want to say thank you, Board, thank you, Secretary Oliva, for taking the time to recognize Mr. Smith. Do you have anything you want to say? Are you good?
Yeah, I just want to say my sincere appreciation for you all recognizing me. I'm standing before the Board of Education and it's a true honor. And, uh, I, I'd like to say that, uh, saving a man's life, sending him home to his family. And, uh, his family consider me to be their hero. I accept that. And I accept you all graciously honoring me for, well, doing my job, doing, getting the fire extinguisher, doing that kind of thing. And, uh, God intervened that day, no doubt about it. And, uh, Mr. Kirk Patrick said the same thing, that I was his angel in the right spot that Lord brought us together. And truly, he did. And, uh, once again, I'd like to thank you all and, uh, I appreciate the honor. Thank you.
Before you go, um, I think it's important for everybody to know that October is National School Bus Safety Week. So we also want to take a, a chance to thank all of our bus drivers and remind everybody to pay attention to the rules of the road and when you see red, have caution ahead. And, um, make sure that we do our due diligence to keep our students safe. But before you leave, I'm going to ask the Board to come down and, and join you because we want to present you with a memento so that you don't leave here empty-handed so that, that we can memorialize this event. And I think it's very fitting that it's a clock because I'd like to say you got there in the nick of time. So then we'll be able to come and present that so much the Board to go down, if you don't mind.
That's amazing, we appreciate Mr. Smith coming in again and all the bus drivers across the state. With that, we will get started on our agenda. I know we have, I don't believe we have any Board members on Zoom, but we have some presenters. If y'all don't mind making sure your microphone is on silent. Changes to the agenda, item number six has been removed, Board members. So we will not be hearing that today. Are there any other changes? Then we will get started on item number one. We have Stacy Smith to present the cut scores. We had a great work session yesterday and really appreciate you and your staff for all, and thousands of teachers for all of the work that has gone into this.
Thank, thank you very much, Stacy Smith, Deputy Commissioner. We have a short video we're going to show that kind of gives an overview and actually has some interviews with folks who have participated in the process.
Arkansas students deserve an education that is rigorous, challenging, and prepares them for life after high school. To help educators accomplish that goal, the Arkansas Teaching, Learning, and Assessment System, or ATLAS, was created. A fully-aligned, comprehensive learning and assessment system, ATLAS was designed by Arkansas educators for Arkansas public school students in grades K through 10. So how does ATLAS work? Picture a system of gears. At the core are the Arkansas academic standards, which clearly outline in straightforward language what students should know and be able to do at each grade level and in each subject area. The curriculum then determines the materials and sequence used to teach the standards. The teaching and learning component of ATLAS is essential as it directly addresses the teacher-student relationship. With ATLAS, teachers no longer have to guess what is important for students to learn. It's all laid out in the standards. When it comes to assessment, students take classroom and interim assessments at key points during the school year to ensure they're on track, followed by a summative assessment at the end of the school year. In short, the standards drive the curriculum, which guides instruction, which in turn informs assessment. At every stage of this process, from writing the standards to developing test items to setting the cut scores, Arkansas educators, our experts, were involved. Arkansas educators know what is best for Arkansas students. So it's essential that our teaching, learning, and assessment system reflect that as well.
I'm excited that it's an Arkansas product. We brought in Arkansas educators from all over the state to help write our Arkansas state standards. And when we talk about what state standards are, that is what we want students to know and learn at every grade level. Well, once we had the standards written by Arkansas educators, we also brought in Arkansas educators to help write the test items. So we have an aligned system that is created by the experts right here in this state that measures whether or not students are learning what we expect them to learn.
One of the things that I've been particularly pleased with is that the teachers in the state of Arkansas have set the standards for what our students should know to make sure they're ready when they leave high school to go off and do whatever they want to do for the rest of their lives.
What I like most is by far the alignment. We've been talking about this for over a decade. It feels weird for me to be able to say that now, but like, for well over a decade, we've been talking about alignment. This system is a stab in that. It really gives us what we need on the building level and the district level to create better assessments on our end. So we know that if we're assessing our students on a daily basis, on an interim basis, within our units and our quarters, we can be more predictive of how students are actually doing. That's been the rub all along. Us not knowing exactly where kids are, we have good guestimates about where kids are and their progress. We now can do that better.
I am very confident in the cut scores that we set as Arkansas educators because it was a lot of conversation that went into that. When we first got in the room, we had to identify our cut scores based on what we thought. And then after then, they showed us a median of where everybody's scores were. And we had conversation and we collaborated and we was like, why was your score this and why was your score that? And then after that, we got a chance to go back and rethink our cut score. And then everyone felt confident in that process because we were able to collaborate, but we also had the last say-so.
The test itself is an Arkansas test, fully designed. Arkansas teachers who have reviewed all the items, Arkansas items that have been developed just for Arkansas. It is all about Arkansas standards. What makes this important is that we are comparing our students' performance to the state standards, what we expect them to know and be able to do. And the, the test items just represent different demonstrations of that. And that's what we're hoping is that this new system brings the resources, takes away the guesswork, takes away the extra time, and gives you a place where you can really focus on what am I learning about this learner and what do I do next because of that.
Arkansas educators know what is best for Arkansas students. So it's essential that our teaching, learning, and assessment system reflect that as well. With ATLAS, Arkansas is paving the way and setting a standard of excellence in education. This new, aligned, comprehensive teaching, learning, and assessment system connects learning across all grade levels, preparing Arkansas students for the bright future that awaits. For more information, please visit the website displayed on your screen.
Arkansas Learns is a bold, innovative approach to improving education.
I think we're ready, we're done.
And one of the biggest foundations.
Cut! Jacob's favorite part right there, right? Um, well, yesterday, I think we spent about two and a half hours actually talking about this process and this work with the Board and the work session. So today, I'm going to quickly hit some slides, some topics that we hit on yesterday for the general audience that's watching, and then ask today for the Board to approve the cut standards, the cut scores. Okey-dokey, Kim. Okay, now, there we go. All right, so ATLAS is our assessment system in the state. Um, it's, over and over again, you've heard that the assessment is measuring the Arkansas standards, the Arkansas academic standards. Um, it's very closely aligned and Arkansas educators have been involved in every step. Arkansas has maintained the rigor and our assessment gives a clear picture of how Arkansas students are doing, comparing students across the nation in the future. Um, the ATLAS system also lowers the burden on teachers by providing a one-stop place for all assessments, right? No longer will you have teachers doing a variety of assessments from outside resources that are required by the state. It's all in one place. And it also allows us to be able to, over the next years, being able to use one system to be able to track our students and track achievement across the years moving forward and really, really making sure that we have a unified progress monitoring system. In the development of this assessment, Arkansas teachers, Arkansas educators were at the core. We've, over 3,700 teachers were involved in this process. That's a lot. Um, over 500 educators were actually involved in approving individual test items. There's not an item on the assessment that an Arkansas teacher has not approved. That's huge. This is our test, our items, our standards. Um, we had 200 educators actually working directly on setting the standards and that was led by national experts. Over half of the districts in Arkansas had a teacher participating in that process. Um, ATLAS, again, is aligned with our Arkansas state standards for ELA, math, and science. Components of the new assessment system in K-2, we have the screener component, which we've talked about a lot in our workshop yesterday. Um, that is that piece that we have required dyslexia law, we have required screening requirements within Arkansas Learns. It's built into one system. The reporting, the parent-friendly communication is all within a system, again, lowering the burden on teachers. The testlets is another level of diagnostic assessments that once a student is identified as being potentially at risk on that screener, they then can move to testlets to again, give that teacher and the parent more information about what that child needs. On your third through high school system, you also have your classroom assessments and classroom tools. That is a big thing. That was one of the things when they were surveying teachers about what do you want in assessment system? They said very clearly, we want tools that we can use that are aligned. And this actually provides that for them. It actually, actually gives them a very clear picture of what the rigor is of the standard and the expectation of what students need to be able to do. It also allows us to have these interim assessments that schools can participate in. And this is where we really want to lean into identifying students at all levels of what their needs are. And this is where acceleration becomes part of our conversation, right? If we know that a student is ready at the beginning of the year, they have already mastered the standards at the grade level that they're in, the question then becomes, now what? What are we doing? Pushing students forward and making sure that giving them the education that they need and deserve. Um, the summative assessment, again, is meeting that federal requirement piece. Building the ATLAS, the ATLAS system, it was a process, right? And again, it starts with that foundational piece of the Arkansas academic standards. I think I've said Arkansas academic standards at least 12 times already, okay? Because again, that is the foundational piece. That is the piece when we began this process, that Secretary Oliva pushed us to make sure that we got it right, right? Teachers around the state feel like our standards are now very clear, they're concise, and we know what we're assessing our students on. Being able to provide a blueprint about exactly what's on the test is out there for teachers, right? Every step along this way involved educators, involved our staff, involved deep conversation about decision points. Specifications, what, what the test looks like, how, the length of it, the types of questions. Item acceptance review, again, Arkansas educators reviewed the items on the test to say, yes, these align. Yes, these are appropriate for our students. Item development, um, we needed to develop new test items for our assessment because when we reviewed, we didn't have enough for some of the math items, right? So we had to go back and actually create and develop items. Spring summative, um, we were able to launch that last year for, across the state. And the thing that's really kind of unique about it is whenever you launch something this big, you know if it goes right or wrong, right? And you know that based on the complaints that you get. I'm very proud to say that last year when we launched the ATLAS Spring Summative, it went fairly smooth. You guys weren't getting tons of emails, um, school districts weren't, I mean, there was support that was needed, but for launching something that is impacting and touching every student in the state, every school district in the state, that says something about our assessment team and the work that they did. Um, scoring and data review, um, that, that happened during the summer piece and the standard setting has been going on during this fall. And so that's what we're here today, is to say that the standards have been set. And again, that decision point involved Arkansas educators every step of the way. So, performance level descriptors, and I want to spend just a moment kind of sitting on this slide because this is what, this is one of the biggest changes, all right? Making sure our families and our educators and districts across the state understand what the different levels mean. And this is different from our previous assessment. Arkansas is setting a new baseline. Arkansas is setting a new baseline, all right? And when you look at the performance levels, level one is a student that demonstrates limited knowledge about the grade level standards. Level two is a student demonstrating basic understanding of the skills required at those grade level standards. That means they've not mastered, um, at, at the end-of-the-year assessment, they've not mastered the standards for that grade level, all right? But they're showing some basic level understanding. Level three is proficient understanding, meaning they've demonstrated mastery of the standards of the grade level that they just completed. And level four is that they have an advanced understanding. And so when you think about where our support's needed, levels three and four are students who have, are proficient. Students in level two may need some support, okay? Students in level one will need some support. So looking at the proposed cuts and what that means for our state. Again, our teachers had high, um, expectations for their students. And when they examined the test items, they were very clear about what they thought their students should be able to do, right? And so they maintained the rigor. The department didn't go in saying, this is how we're going to divide this up. Teachers actually took the test items, they had to rank the items, and they had to say this is what a student should be able to do if they're level one, level two, level three, and level four. The teachers who participated in this did not know how this was going to come out in the data on, on the front end. They, they put where their marks in and then we dumped the data in to see how it spread out, okay? So it was a very rigorous process, but also at the same time held true to what we expect our students to be able to do. So here, you can see the ELA results. When you look at the overall proficiency and a lot of folks look at that third grade line and you're looking at that 36% of students that are kind of in that proficient level to, um, level four on advanced. When you go to math and you look across the cuts on the math scores, um, the area that kind of jumps out to everyone on this one is algebra and geometry. I want to remind folks that previously, we had a grade level assessment that was not tied to an end-of-course exam. In Arkansas, in high schools, we have individual courses. We have algebra, we have geometry, we have Algebra II, okay? Before, if you were in ninth grade, you took a ninth grade assessment and there were multiple, multiple, um, questions across the math strands, okay? It was not you taking an assessment for the course that you're in. We have returned back to end-of-course exams. And so if you're taking, if you're in algebra, you're going to take the end-of-course algebra exam based on the algebra standards. If you're in geometry, you're going to take the end-of-course exam on geometry standards. And this is an area where right now, we can see that we are going to, our teachers are going to lean in and they're going to start making sure that they're now being, they're teaching the standards that they're being assessed on and that they're charged to teach with the course that they're teaching. So we expect those scores to, um, change over time. Science, um, the science cuts for third through eighth, you can see those, how they, have they flushed out. Overall, this kind of gives you a snapshot of the percentages, very clearly of how the state scores sort out into the different levels. And this is all the grades combined, all right? So when you look at level one for math at 35%, again, that's averaging in those very high levels from the math scores for algebra and geometry as well. This slide right here, um, again, I want to say that we are creating a new baseline for Arkansas this year. And comparing the scores to previous assessments doesn't necessarily work because the assessments mean something different. So on the screen right now, you can see three different tests. ACT Aspire, which was our previous assessment, ATLAS, which is our current assessment, and NAEP, which is a national assessment. ACT Aspire assessment, those students were measured on their progress towards going to college readiness, for college readiness, okay? Yesterday, Denise Arilla did a great job explaining how it was backwards mapped from students' performance at that level entering college all the way back, right? And so is a student going to score 22 on the ACT when they're going into math, right? That's what that predictor was. And so when you look at 46% on ACT Aspire and what that meant, um, again, it's tracking towards that. Means something completely different than what we now have with ATLAS in the middle, right? This is directly tied to our standards and students showing proficiency or mastery to the standards. So comparing the two, um, in, in this, in this way, it doesn't work. It's two different things. Um, NAEP is a national comparison on the subgroups of students in states and the different levels that students are scoring. Overall though, if you had something to gain from this or garner from looking at the three across, what I want you to see is when you look at that mid-cut, right? Especially in how we're comparing at a national level, what we're saying is proficient for our students in the state of Arkansas closely aligns with a national assessment on how our students are doing. It also, that mid-cut point was, are students ready for post-secondary work? So you can kind of see a cut right across the middle that kind of goes together. But each of the cuts means something different. So I'm going to pause right there. And today, again, I want to know that we are requesting the State Board to approve the following cut scores. And this is actually the cut score chart and the scale that we will be using that, that we've applied to those graphs that you just saw. So these are the scores for ELA. These would be the scores for each level for math. These would be the scores for science. And again, this is what was applied to the data points I just showed you. So I'm going to pause there and Jake, Secretary, if you'd like to add?
So thank you, Stacy, for providing an overview. Just kind of, kind of remind the Board, I know we spent a lot of time on this yesterday in the workshop in going very deep into the process of how do the educators determine where to draw that line when you're saying, this is our definition for level one, level two, level three, level four? But I want to remind everybody that this is, is a big deal because when we started with Learns and educating, looking at the priorities of, of what we wanted to, to achieve with Learns, it was about improving student outcomes. For far too long, our metrics are telling us, we've been ranked in the bottom in education. And I got asked a lot when I got here, why are we consistently 45, 42, 48? When you look at what's happening in our schools? And it became very clear. And I always go back to a common saying that says, bad systems beat good people every single time. Our system was not aligned as a state and that was the foundation and priority of what we needed to accomplish with the Learns. We had standards that were confusing and teachers didn't know what they meant. So everybody was coming up with their own definition of how to implement them. We had instructional materials and curriculum that was not aligned with those standards. The professional development that the teachers needed to implement those standards weren't aligned with their curriculum and the strategies that worked best for their students. And then we had a college and career readiness assessment that wasn't giving any useful information to our educators. So when we polled those 3,700 educators and start pulling those teachers together and says, this is our chance to hit refresh, this is our chance to build a new system, a new system, what do we have to get right? And what we're recommending today is based on those feedbacks. They want to know, can I get real-time information throughout the year that's consistent with what we expect students to know and learn? We're doing that through progress monitoring. Can we reduce the burden of over-testing with all the different requirements with dyslexia screening and additional assessments? "Can we reduce the burden of over-testing with all the different requirements with dyslexia screening and additional assessments?" We have done that by embedding that into this system. "Is there a way that I can pull test items and create my own formative assessments throughout the year based on the standards so that I can see if my, my students are getting it?" This system allows that. "Can I get this information immediately during progress monitoring right after we give, we give those assessments?" Yes. "Can you tell me what's on the assessment?" Because that was one of the biggest things that we heard from teachers all along. "We can get better performance of our students if you would tell us what's in the blueprint, the previous assessment." They didn't have access to the blueprint. We were like, "Here it is. This is what we want our students to know and learn, in clear and concise language, and this is how we're going to measure it." This is not a gotcha. This is a tool. This test doesn't define overall student performance. The educators know what their children can do, and it shouldn't be a surprise. So by being able to create a platform, that's going to be a one-stop shop for not only educators, but for parents, to be able to log in and see how their children are doing, is a big deal. I like to say, we've been on offense, getting the system aligned and marching down the field. Today, we're first in goal, and when we set these cut scores and, and we start being able to release these tools, we're going to be able to spike the ball in the end zone. So when we approve, or we recommend that we approve these cut scores, we'll now be able to apply that to the data. Because we administered this new assessment in the spring. The data doesn't mean anything until we come up with definitions. Now that we're having recommendations of those clear definitions, we can apply those definitions to the data, and then we can start doing the processing and validating individual student scores so that we can give that information to parents, to students, and to teachers. Because we hear a lot from our schools, "When are we going to get our test scores? When are we going to get our results from the new assessment?" We've been very clear and upfront that this takes time, because we're going to have that in new assessment, but then we've got to go through this standard-setting process to determine what these cut scores are, and we have to get it right. So all summer, we've asked those teachers, hundreds of teachers, to come in, and we are so appreciative of the time that they gave to helping making sure that our state gets this right so that we can go through a process that when we make these recommendations and if a student gets that score, it's a reliable and fair assessment measure. And I'm confident that the team and those educators did a wonderful job leading up to this today so that we can get this across the finish line and then start on the next phase. I, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Hope and Michelle and Denise and some of the folks that are in this room. Because they have been carrying this football and running these plays on offense for about a year and a half. It's the longest game they've ever played. So, when we say that they have really gone above and beyond and spent nights and weekends and a lot of time to get this right, it's truly reflected in these tables that we're presenting today.
That's why we don't need a video of the secretary. We got the real deal right here. Yeah, so this is the time to ask if you have any questions or comments, I'd love to take them right now.
Board members, I'll start to my left, Ms. Rollins, questions?
I don't have any questions this morning. I thought you did a great job yesterday during our work session to really explain everything. And I appreciate that so much. I do want to thank our secretary for his vision and for making this happen. This is exciting, to see everything aligned the way it needed to be aligned all along. This will, I think, will make a big difference in our schools and in our students' learning, and I appreciate you so much. Also appreciate all the teachers that have spent their time doing this. It's, it's wonderful, and I think it's going to put Arkansas on a really good path of learning. And I think there's always a comment, it's, "When we do it together, it's better." And this speaks volumes to that, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and we have a wonderful team, and we have a wonderful state. We have people that are really passionate about helping children. And when you get them in a room and say, "Let's figure this out together, we're going to come up with a high-quality product." So I always say, "I don't think this is going to improve outcomes." I know this is going to improve outcomes. We are setting that baseline today, and that's where we start. And for year after year after year, we're going to see these trends start moving in the right direction.
More questions are coming? Is that everybody's getting it? To my right, Mr. Henderson?
Yeah, to add to Kathy's point, 2 and 1/2 hours is a long time to sit in a meeting discussing a very important topic. One thing that really, really impressed me was the number of engagement from teachers and school districts. You know, you say if you want to make a positive change on anything, you got to have the team buy-in. And I tell you, the team is aligned on this one. This is, this is, in my opinion, it would be a great win for Arkansas.
Mr. Bragg, Mr. McCaslin? Thank you.
Okay, so, we're going to do something a little bit different. Jacob's going, oh, did you hear Jacob say, "Oh, no"? Denise, Michelle, Hope, at least come up here and stand. Just come up here and stand. Come on, quickly, quickly, quickly. Jacob's already going to be mad at me for delaying time. Just come stand right here. Okay, board, this is the opportunity for you to spike the football. We're asking for you to approve the following cut scores for ELA math-science assessment. Now, you guys give them very serious looks, okay? So we're asking for a motion.
I would make the motion that we accept the cut scores.
There's a motion by Mr. Bragg to accept the cut scores, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Henderson, any questions or comments? With that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank, thank you all and, and those that work with you. Again, that represents lots of hard work. And now there's more work to be done, but we're excited for this next phase as schools are digging in this school year. With that, we will move on to our second agenda item, the Arkansas Governor's School Selection Site. We have Dr. Pride coming to present.
Good morning. Tiffany Pride, Assistant Commissioner of Learning Services. Alright, so I stand before you for the recommendation for the 2025 through 2027 Arkansas Governor's School Site Selection Committee Recommendation. Presidents and chancellors of all four-year colleges and universities were invited to submit proposals to host the 2025 through 2027 Arkansas Governor's School. A proposal was received from Arkansas Tech University. The Site Selection Committee reviewed the proposal and conducted a site visit to the institution. Their recommendation for the proposed site for 2025 through 2027 is being presented to the State Board for your approval. And of course, you had all the attachments, and so I am here for that recommendation and approval.
Thank you, Dr. Pride. Questions, board members, to my left, Ms. Rollins?
I'm just wondering if, have, have the budget increased? Or has it stayed pretty, pretty flat?
So, it typically, it depends on the size, the, the number of weeks. So it's been about the same. If it's, it depends on if it's a four, or a five, or a six-week program, but it's, it's about the same. And we also have, I was remiss to say, we also have online Summer Williams, who was the chair of the Site Selection Committee. And she is the APGT Coordinator from Sheridan, and then we also have the co-chair. I just want to recognize them for their work. Jill Claxton, sorry for that mispronunciation, Jill. And she is, she was also the co-chair, but it, it has been about the same.
Ms. Hunter, Ms. Keener, Mr. Henderson, Mr. Bragg, Mr. McCaslin? I have a few questions, if that's okay? So just to be clear, this was the only university that applied?
Yes, this is the only university that applied. But all of them did receive the request for proposals.
Okay, last time, how many, do we know how many universities?
I can't remember the number, but I can definitely, it was more than one last time. I know at least two last time, the last cycle.
And this will go through 2027?
Yes.
The one thing I noticed when I reviewed it that I had a question on was the calendar of it. I know that it goes in through late July up into August. And we have some school districts starting in August. I don't know if that's something that, you know, earlier with the extended year. Yeah, I didn't know if that's something that you all talked with them about, if they allow students to leave early, if their school district is starting with that extended calendar.
Yeah, certainly, we would work with them if their school district was starting early. I can't remember if we talked about that, but I definitely can check. But we definitely work with students if they, because they're all rising seniors. So we definitely would work with them to make sure that they're in their schools. But calendars also can be adjusted. If we see it before it starts, we could talk with the university about changing it.
Okay, because it is a four-week program. Was it six weeks at one point?
It can be four to six weeks, I believe.
Okay, and they proposed four?
Yes, they proposed, yes.
Okay, that was my main question. I assume they would accommodate those students that don't want to make sure that...
Students first, yes.
Okay. With that, any more questions, board members, comments? So looking for a motion on the site selection. I think our motion would be to approve or not approve the recommendation for Arkansas Tech University to host Governor's School.
I'll make that motion to approve.
There's a motion by Ms. Rollins to approve the recommendation for Arkansas Tech University to host Governor's School. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a second by Ms. Keener, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pride.
And while Dr. Pride's there, I think Dr. Pride and her team from Learning Services gets a lot of credit too for where we arrived and we started building out the system of alignment around standards, high-quality instructional materials, professional development, and aligned assessments. So they've, they've been a big part of this process, so thank you as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Awesome, and thank you, Ms. Williams and Ms. Claxton, for being online today and for the work you all did and continue to do on the committee. With that, we will move on to rules. We have a set of rules under Item 3 that Ms. Smith will be presenting.
Okay. Quick reminder of our rules process and where we're at with this set of rules. Again, when a set of rules comes, it gets released for, it gets released for public comment. Once approved by the State Board, it goes out for a period of no less than 30 days. If there is substantive changes, it goes back out again for 30 days. Then it comes back to the State Board for final approval. Once it's finally approved by you guys, it then goes over to the Arkansas Legislative Council, okay? So the set of rules I'm going to go over with you, you've already seen them, and we've already workshopped these rules. They have been out for public comment, and now they are back with you. Some of them have gone out for two rounds of public comments with some minor adjustments. And then they're here for you today for final approval, okay? So the first one that's on the list today is the Career Pathway Rules. Again, this is providing the clear path for high-wage, high-growth jobs in Arkansas, alignment to LEARNS. It begins with the 9th grade class for the 24-25 year. This one went out for a second round of public comment because we had the word "may" in and it changed to "shall." And that had to do with Section 7 about reimbursement to employers. So that was the tweak there of it having to go for two rounds. There was a collaborative process to identify the different pathways and require school districts to make sure that they are providing a high, a career-ready pathway. So each school district has to offer at least one in the high-wage, high-growth of their three. And I'm going to batch these like we normally do, if you guys are fine with that. Alright, the second one has to do with consolidations and annexations. This set of rules is a legislative change. So it took the, it took the 350 that a school had to automatically close with the 350 piece. And so those were the components here that were changed. So it removes the authority from the State Board to involuntary consolidated district. Establishes a process for district boundary changes, because we're starting to see some of those pop up. And final changes to district lines filed with the county auditor at the request of GIS. The next one is website, it's, it's website changes. This was really trying to get everything aligned, okay? Getting the alignment dates. We had a lot of different dates as far as when things had to be posted by districts. Some of those are legislative dates, and some of them are dates that were in different rules. So where applicable, where we were able to streamline and line up dates, we, we did that in these rules.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
Yesterday, you talked about the family portals. And I'm wondering if that could be something that's required to be put on the local district's website, you know, the link?
Right, the link to the family portal. Yeah, so what we will do is, we'll make sure that that link is posted on our sites, and we'll work with districts to make sure that they're giving access to that. As far as requiring it in our rules that they have to require it at this point, that would require us to... Yeah, yeah, it would, it would be a substantive change at this, at this moment. But most definitely, that is, we want parent-friendly information out. The family portal for Atlas is going to be a big component of that. Our hope is that we create a communications toolkit for districts to utilize, that they, that it lends itself for that, right? And so we'll be guiding the districts on the way for that. So if we see that districts are not utilizing it, I definitely would agree with you that that would be something that we might want to come back and change. Thank you. Alright, the next one is standards for accreditation. Again, these standards for accreditations were updated to reflect LEARNS. It added the middle, the middle-school CTE career awareness and exploration that's required in LEARNS. It added the high schools must offer that one career-ready pathway that's reflected in those other rules. It added the class size for hiring determined by October 1st for a standards violation. It edited the, it added the 75 hours of community service requirement. Clarified components of what needs to be in a school-level improvement plan. And again, streamlined dates that you just saw in the website rules. Alright, I've got two more, I'm going to keep going if that's okay. The next one is Arkansas Better Chance Program. So again, the Office of Early Childhood transitioned from DHS to the Department of Education, defines the components for kindergarten readiness. It's shifting language for a new quality rating tool. It requires up to 178 days for a minimum of seven hours a day for a program. And we added in these rules that less days would be prorated based on a daily rate. So if they don't go the 178, they'll be prorated. Extended hours do not count as additional days. Literature curriculum for our programs need to be aligned to the science of reading and streamlining and clean up from the transition. Better Beginnings. So the Better Beginnings is the, the quality standards. So it's, again, reflecting the transformative change of moving it from Department of Human Services to the Department of Ed. Better Beginnings transforms early learning by improving the standards for licensing. And it helps childcare providers by improving the rankings using the tools and trainings. This is an area that we're going to, you're going to continue to see this one coming back, okay? This is, this is in transition. We have a third-party group right now that's working with the department on reviewing our licensing rules and the standard settings. We've got different tools we're using for how we're evaluating programs. And so these rules, while we're approving them today for programs currently, as they're currently functioning, you're going to continue to see early childhood rules coming back. Would you agree with that? I got an amen today, there we go. So with that, I would ask that the board approve these rules for final approval so that they may be released to go to the ALC.
Board member questions or comments, Ms. Rollins? Okay. Thank you, I know, again, this represents a lot of work by many people to get here. So with that, we'll keep the floor open for a motion to approve Item Number 3, Set of Rules.
I'll move for final approval on the rules.
There's a motion by Mr. Bragg to approve rules, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Hunter, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
The last rule, the next one that's on here, is a repeal. And this is a... And this is a repeal, an EFA rule for payment. So i- if you'll remember, that we have to go back in time a little bit, you had to pass a set of rules for, for us to be able to process payments for the first EFA rules when they came out, while the other EFA rules were in draft. Everything that's in this for payment has been included in the previous EFA rules that you just finalized in the last few months. So this is no longer needed. So we're repealing this standalone set of rules on payment because this is now within the encompassing EFA rules that you have already approved. So we're asking for a repeal of this one.
Board members, questions or comments to my left?
Let me do a question real quick to legal, I need to ask a question.
Is this, is this going to go out for public comment for thirty days, or is this going straight to ALC? It's already gone over there, so this is for final? Okay, thank you, sorry.
So this is for final, I just want to clarify that.
Final approval to repeal.
Yes, final approval for a repeal.
Board members to my right, questions or comments? Okay, then the floor will be open for a motion.
I make the motion that we repeal the DESI rule governing educational freedom account payment processing.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. We have a motion to repeal the rules. Is there a second? Second? A second by Ms. Hunter. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we have item number five, a request for a licensure waiver. Ms. Saracini.
Good morning, Board. Carlye Saracini, Assistant Commissioner for Educative Effectiveness and Licenseur. And before you this morning, I'm going to let Whitney James, our managing attorney for PLSB, go over the rules, because this is a waiver, and then I will start. Ms. James?
Good morning, Whitney James with the department. The rules here are, of course, the chair will swear in any witnesses who are testifying today. Each party will have the opportunity to present an opening statement of five minutes. Then each party will be provided fifteen minutes to present their cases, beginning with the representative of the division. And then, following that, the board can ask questions and have discussion. Then each party will be allowed to make a closing argument, ending with the division. So the first is the division's opening statement, five minutes.
Again, good morning.
Thank you.
And this is a licensure action, and usually it's a DHS child ill-treatment registry. This morning, it's not, it's based on a state police background check. Just to kind of give you a synopsis, I know you have your exhibits, and you've looked at it, the pre-educator was twenty-three at the time of this offense and is currently sixty, which is a good age, because I just turned that age. The incident took place, again, thirty-seven years ago. She has worked in that district since twenty-seventeen as an ALE paraprofessional, and has really shown her character to do so. Anyway, I just want to make sure that you understand, this is a long time ago, the district is working as a classified employee, per statute and law, they can waive this, and they did waive it for her to work. And now she is ready to do her internship, and that's why she's coming before you today to ask for this waiver.
Thank you, Ms. Saracini. Ms. Ross, prepared to speak? I'm going to swear you in before you speak. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Cheryl Ross, and I committed a crime in nineteen eighty-seven. I was a employee at a fast-food restaurant. I did not make the deposit as sp- as scheduled. Actually, I made it a couple of days later, but before the, before I made it, the law had got involved. But from, from that point on, I have changed my life. Well, I've been educated, I went to nursing school, I've obtained an LPN license, I worked for, as a nurse, for over thirteen years. I left there, I have started school at SAU, I've maintained a good grade point average. I have been working at Camden Fairview Elementary School as an ALE pal pro for the last seven years. There has been no incidents, no problems. I haven't had any problems anywhere. I volunteer in the community, I, my husband is here, I'm married to a preacher. I have asked for forgiveness from the people that I committed the crime against, I've asked for forgiveness from God, I asked for forgiveness from my family. I have tried to move on with a prosperous life, I have children, grandchildren. And so I'm just here today asking for a waiver to be able to continue my education at SAU, get my license, and become a elementary teacher.
Awesome, thank you, Ms. Ross. With that, do we go back to the department? Open up for questions.
Are there any questions for either one of us, or someone can make a motion?
Well, I will say, Ms. Ross, it's amazing to hear your story and, and what you've done, and so admirable to be going back to school as a second career, in that sense. Board members to my left, questions or comments? No questions. Just that, I'm just so impressed with you as an example of both a caregiver and a lifelong learner, someone who's gone from nursing to teaching, it's remarkable, and what an example you'll set for the students that you'll impact down the road. Board members to my right, questions or comments?
Well, I too very impressed with the fact of, I know it was in eighty-seven?
Yes.
We're talking about thirty-seven years ago, so I'm impressed.
Just, I'll back that up, just to thank you. You have a great story to tell, I believe, and about overcoming odds, no matter how long ago actions were taken, that you can still overcome them, and just thank you for your service, and hope you share your story.
Thank you. Well, with that, if we don't have any other questions, we can proceed on to go ahead and open the floor for a vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then we will open the floor for a vote, and this vote, we have one vote, and it is to, if you don't, if you don't mind reminding us what it was.
Accept, yes. Accept the waiver or deny the waiver.
Okay.
Or grant the waiver or deny the waiver, excuse me.
Okay, so floor is open for a motion to grant the waiver, to receive the license or to deny.
Yes.
Board members, any questions on that? And the floor is open?
I'll make the motion to grant the waiver.
A motion by Ms. Hunter to grant the waiver. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Henderson. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Ross. Good luck in your endeavors. So you continue on. With that, item number six has been pulled, so we will move on to item number seven, and that is you, Ms. James, to present.
This is regarding a PLSB case for Mr. James Wilson. This is one that you all reviewed on the consent agenda last month, and chose to pull it to look at the file and get some more information. And Mr. Wilson is here with his attorney, and just a reminder of the rules, each party has ten minutes to present an oral argument, I believe he will want to, or he, his attorney may want to make an oral argument. And then the PLSB will have ten minutes for oral argument, and then we're open for discussion or a motion.
Thank you, Ms. James. So I will swear in Mr. Wilson or anyone speaking, any non-attorney speaking on his behalf. Good morning. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. You have, you and your counsel have ten minutes now, thank you.
Thank you, may I proceed?
Yes.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Secretary, members of the board. My name is Casey Castleberry, I'm an attorney here in Little Rock, and I'm here today on behalf of Jimmy Wilson in this matter. Before you, as an initial matter, I'd like to thank you for your time and attention to this matter, and more importantly, for your, your service to our state. I've seen the good work you've done already to this day, and as a, as a father to a child that attends school in this state, or a couple of them actually, I appreciate you all. You were provided some materials that were created by pursuant to an investigation involving Mr. Wilson. I presume you've read all of those materials, so I don't want to belabor the point and tell you things you already know, so I'll try to be brief and point out the, the things from that report and from the incident that I think are, are relevant to your determin- determination today. As you know, this matter involves Mr. Wilson's communications with a female student when Mr. Wilson was a teacher and coach at Russellville School District. I've watched several of your meetings regarding these disciplinary matters involving teachers and students, and there's no doubt that this board takes these matters very seriously, as it should. From watching those meetings, it appears to me that there are a few factors that are critical, or have been critical to this board in its determinations of similar cases. And this is not an exhaustive list, but just from what I've seen, it appears that physical contact is something that is very much an aggravating factor, if you will, a romantic relationship between an educator and a student, a history of similar conduct by the educator, a pattern of grooming conduct from the educator toward the student, and finally, inappropriate photographs are often at issue in those cases. I want to be clear that none of those are present in this case. I'd also like to be clear, and I think it's important, that Mr. Wilson takes responsibility for his actions. He appreciates that he acted inappropriately in texting with this student. It's important to note that he cooperated fully with the investigation when approached. He turned over his phone immediately, he didn't try to prevent the investigators from, from accessing his phone, or from accessing anything that they felt was necessary in order to conduct a full and thorough investigation. When the Ethics Subcommittee made a determination of violations of Standards One and Two, Mr. Wilson accepted those, he signed that form and returned it, accepted his punishment, did not contest it, which I think is further evidence of his acceptance of responsibility, which I think is, is also an important factor for the board to consider. Finally, along those lines, he was terminated from his position of employment at the Russellville School District, and he did not seek an appeal or any other legal or administrative remedy to challenge that termination. Importantly, following that termination, Mr. Wilson was hired at Dover, a school district nearby. Dover was given full knowledge of this incident, they were provided all information relevant to this incident. They also had the opportunity to interview and consider recommendations from individuals who worked with Mr. Wilson over the years, and taking all of that into account, they felt that it was appropriate to hire Mr. Wilson, and although we're early in the school year, he does have a significant track record, both at Russellville and now at Dover, and there have been no other incidents even in any way similar to the incident before you As you're also aware, I think it's overused, anytime someone says it's a, it's a unique situation, every situation's unique, they all involve their own facts, they all involve circumstances which are unique to that case, but in this one, I think it's especially pertinent to point out to the board the connection between Mr. Wilson, his family, and the student and her family. So Mr. Wilson's wife is also, who's here today, is also a coach and teacher at Russellville. She has coached the student in the past, she is very close friends with the student's mother, lifelong friends with the student's mother. These families are close, they live close by. The student has babysat Mr. Wilson and his wife's, they're both coaches, so if I say Coach Wilson, I'm, I'm referring to both of them sometimes. But the student has babysat their children, these people know each other well, have been in each other's houses on numerous occasions, go to church together. In fact, the way the student obtained Mr. Wilson's number was from the student's mother, the student's mother was aware that the student and Mr. Wilson were texting each other, and I would suspect that you've read the letter from the student's mother, she submitted a lengthy letter, and she is here today as well, in case the board finds that to be, to be relevant and to confirm her position has not changed, that she has no problems with the communications between, between her daughter, the student, and Mr. Wilson. Trying my best not to use names here, I know this is public, and would like to protect the student as much as, as, as we can possibly do. I think that letter, again, adds to the factual record that makes this case different than probably most of the ones that come before this board with respect to the parent's position on this issue. And I think it's also important to say that I don't bring up the mother's position as an argument to relieve Mr. Wilson from his responsibilities to comply with the ethical code that applies to all teachers in the state. He understands that his communication was improper, should not have been done through text message, should have been done, if at all, through school district-approved communication avenues. He's not, we're not bringing that up as, as an attempt to avoid responsibility for the incident, but as what I would consider a mitigating factor when this board considers what is an appropriate remedy in this situation. So, again, in conclusion, I'd like to reiterate that Mr. Wilson accepts responsibility for his conduct, recognizes that he acted inappropriately, and we would respectfully ask that the board uphold the recommendation made below. As we mentioned at the outset, Mr. Wilson's here, has been sworn, and is, is available to answer any questions the board may have, and a- as am I, if it would be any benefit to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me clarify, Ms. James, is it the agency that presents next, or do we, can we do questions first?
I really don't have an argument. This one did not go to an evidentiary hearing, so I'm here to remind you of what the recommended sanction was, if you have any questions about the facts. We've sent you everything that was part of the investigation, the full final report, as well as his response. And the recommendation in this case was probation from the Ethics Subcommittee, and you have their, their rationale.
Okay. Yes. Can you remind us, at the point in time when a motion is to be made later, there's three stages of the motion, is that correct?
Yes, there are three parts to that motion, or three motions. The first is whether or not the educator violated the Code of Ethics, and then the standards are part of that motion. The second is to accept or modify the recommendation of, in this case, the Ethics Subcommittee. And then the third is to accept or modify the rationale of the Ethics Subcommittee.
Okay, thank you. With that, then we'll open the floor up for questions.
Yes, ma'am.
For both Ms. Wilson and the agency. I'll look to my left, Ms. Rollins. Ms. Hunter?
Not right now.
Ms. Keener?
Not at the moment.
Mr. Henderson?
Not at the moment.
Mr. Bragg? Mr. McCaslin? Okay. I know it was pulled from the agenda by Ms. Woods, and she's not here today. So, board members, thoughts, questions, comments?
Well, I, I am going to make just a general comment, it's not directed to this case specifically, but I do appreciate your recognition of this board's very low tolerance level for inappropriate behavior. You know, the safety and security of our students is number one, so I am pleased to know that that word is, is getting out.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Additional comments or questions? You know, we had, I'll offer some comments, we had a string, we've had a string of cases that involve text message communications with students, some more severe in nature, and I think we've, we've hashed that out, and, and I know Ms. and I think we've hashed that out, and I know, Ms. James, you've passed that along to PLSB and kind of starting to think more broadly of what support, what information, what training are we giving to teachers, and coaches particularly, regarding text messaging or any messaging with students overall?
I want to find with Cam, to go kind of beyond that, this is, I think there was a comment by Mr. Castleberry that these communications should have happened rather than over text message, but on district communication devices, things like that, over email, but I want to be sure that we go beyond that, that it's not just the method or the means of communication, but that this communication was overly familiar, it crossed lines, that the inherent dynamic between a teacher employed by a district and a student should remain professional in that way as well, that it's beyond just the means of communication, if that makes sense.
Did anyone have any questions of Mr. James, or I will offer Mr. James if you wanted to make a remark yourself. Right back to you. Okay. So, thinking wise, questions or comments? We have, Ms. James, would you mind presenting again the sanctioning, and thank you for leaving the sanctioning rubric for us?
Yes, ma'am. Are you asking Dr. Moore for the motions, or for a refresher?
Remind us of what the recommendation for PLSB was.
Yes, so the PLSB found that Mr. Wilson did violate Standards One and Two, and recommended a probation of license for one year, a $200 fine. There's some coursework and readings listed there, and then written reflections and quarterly reports from the educator supervisor, so he will have to turn those in every quarter so that the Ethics Subcommittee can monitor his progress.
I will ask of Mr. James or Mr. Castleberry, so do you all feel that this incident that occurred will never happen again, and that this sanctioning is going to prevent any sort of further interaction with the students?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
What is your current position in the district that you're working?
At Dover, I'm a sixth grade social studies teacher in a junior high and senior high football coach.
Did you have anything else you wanted to say to us?
I just, I regret, you know, the means, like I said, I've accepted responsibility for that. I let, you know, our family relationship, how familiar the families were, I guess I was, I didn't understand that any communication was a violation of that Ethics One, and that I now do, and accept that, you know, that communication shouldn't have happened.
Well, and beyond that, not just any communication, but an overly familiar relationship, perhaps?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Which is tricky, as I've navigated myself when my children
Right.
Were of the age that, you know, we often had similar situations, and it can, that line can be blurry, so I want to be clear that it's overly familiar.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you feel there is a lack of professional development in that?
And sort of boundaries?
In learning how to communicate what's proper and not proper with students?
I don't know if it was a lack of, or if, again, just my familiarity, maybe it clouded, you know, like Ms. Keener was saying, just trying to toe a line of what that was, and, you know, this coursework that Ms. James has given me, I think will help with that, and, you know, I much more understand that as well now, just diving deeper into it.
Thank you. Board members, any more questions? Mr. Wilson? Okay. Anyone have questions on how, you know, we did a few of these last month, but how the motions should go? We have the three separate ones.
We'll have three separate motions, you said?
Yes. Oh, we missed you last month, yes. So, the first motion is regard to the Code of Ethics and which standards have been violated.
Okay. I'll make a motion, then, that Mr. James Wilson did violate Standards One and Two.
There's a motion on the floor that Standards One and Two were violated, which was the recommendation of the PLSB, or the finding of the PLSB. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Ms. Keener. Any questions or comments? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next motion is in regards to the sanction.
Yes, ma'am.
To accept or modify
Yes, ma'am.
The prison and sanction, and the prison and sanction is one year probation, $200 fine, and a set of trainings, as you have.
Yes, everything, yes, ma'am, everything that's listed in there on the IDR that you received, which is the, it is, there are three courses and a book, written reflections on the training and book, and then quarterly reports, so that he is still having to turn in something every quarter from his current employer.
And does that go to you, Ms. James? I've forgotten, where does the written reports come to you?
If the State Board orders this, they will come back to you. If the Ethics Subcommittee orders them, and I probably misspoke earlier, then those would go back to the Ethics Subcommittee for approval, but if it, since he's been to the State Board, we'll bring him back to you every quarter.
Okay. Any questions on that?
So, we need a motion to accept or modify?
Yes.
So, I'll make a motion to accept the sanctions by the
Ethics Subcommittee.
Ethics Subcommittee, thank you.
There's a motion to accept the sanctions by the Ethics Subcommittee. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a second by Ms. Rollins. Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then our third is to accept or modify the rationale.
Yes, ma'am. I could read that back if you would like.
Okay.
The rationale from the Ethics Subcommittee was inappropriate communication with students, inappropriate interaction with students, exhibited inappropriate disposition inclusive of professional and ethical behavior, violated district, state, or federal policies or law. Text messages show that the communication between the educator and student were more friendly than professional. Text messages were about non-school-related topics, but they were not sexual. The educator willingly turned over his cellphone in text messages to administrators when asked. Very low negative impact on the student. The educator expressed remorse regarding the situation, and now understands the inappropriateness of text messaging the student. The custodial parent of the student was aware of the communication and did not find the content of the messages as inappropriate.
Okay, so, board members, the third motion is to accept or modify that rationale as presented.
I make a motion that we accept the rationale from the Ethics Subcommittee.
And there's a motion now by Ms. Rollins to accept the rationale. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Hunter. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And thank you, just some concluding comments, Ms. James. I know we have a number of PLSB cases on our consent agenda item today.
Yes, ma'am.
And I appreciate that you all have passed along our conversations here to PLSB, and I hope that our conversations and PLSB's conversation has also gone out to educators across the state. Obviously, we have thousands of amazing educators, and we just unfortunately see things that happen sometimes, but we want to make sure we have drawn that line very clear of what's appropriate and not, and I think we will have further communications, and you all, particularly about electronic communications with students.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and, Mr. Wilson, thank you for coming in today, and we stand that we don't want anything else to happen again. Move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, that is the end of our action agenda. Let's do the consent agenda, and then we'll take a break. The consent agenda as presented, does anyone have any items they would like to pull to discuss? I believe there's 15 items on the agenda. Any questions or comments on any of the items to be pulled? I will make the comment, we do have, unfortunately, a number of PLSB cases and a number of revocations. And again, I appreciate the PLSB taking a stand. Unfortunately, there are things that occur that that individual should no longer be in front of students. I appreciate them taking a stand to do that, in that sense. I know that's a lot of time by you and your staff, so thank you all.
Ms. James, do you feel like we need to strengthen the professional development on communication between teachers and students? It seems like that is becoming more of an issue.
We are working on revamping our training to focus more on Code of Conduct and not just the standards.
As I say, I think it'd be a good idea, because we've been having the same conversation, is that we can't be on defense when dealing with potential behaviors that are putting students in harm. We have to be on offense, and there needs to be things that we can do as an agency to help make sure that the process for the educators that are coming into the classroom is done with diligence, and we're putting high-quality individuals in front of them, and that they know that there's a clear delineation of what is appropriate and what is not appropriate. So, we've been talking with Carly and her team, and have started brainstorming some strategies, and I think it'd be fitting for the board to hear that.
So, we've been discussing, and we're sending a large team to the Professional Practices Institute, actually, next week, if I'm not mistaken, and we would like for the Teacher of the Year kind of to take this on, because who better from a model teacher? So, Kapri Salam is going to head this up, and we're going to kind of transition from just talking about the Code of Ethics and switch it to Code of Conduct. And this is your Code of Conduct, and then here's our Code of Ethics that it affects, because I think it's, we've really had the conversations, because I signed a lot yesterday that came in, and it's kind of a large number, and so going forward, we need to shift the practice of just telling you about the Code of Ethics to what's the Code of Conduct, what is the professional, how are you a professional? And so, that's what we're going to be shifting to within the next couple of months, and really going out, and not only current teachers, but our aspiring teachers, because I think that is also somewhere we need to do a lot more professional learning. And so, we're going to, and we're revamping things on Arkansas ideas, because we, what's currently up there is all the way back from about 2016, 2015, and we need to really update those things and keep them current. And again, going back and shifting, not just talking about the Code of Ethics, but the Code of Conduct. And this is something that's shifting across the United States, it's just not in Arkansas, and that's why we're sending quite a few next week, and then we're going to revamp and make sure that our professional learning is targeted to the specific audiences, because I think your extracurricular activities needs to be a little bit different, because that's where the slippery slope can occur, and that's why we really want to just target and make sure our professional learning is targeted to the audience of which we're doing our professional development with. So, maybe that's something we can share, once we have that all planned out and created and developed, to show you, because we would like to not just only do presentations, but videos and kind of scenarios, answer questions type professional learning.
Well, I'd also love to see more, perhaps, parent education around this as well, and establishing boundaries, and helping kids understand when these situations arise, how can you set a clear line, how can you set a boundary? While the onus certainly should be on the children or the parents, unfortunately, we understand that you have to be on the defense for that as well. And I know that Deputy District Attorney, or Federal District Attorney, Kristen Bryant, has come, and she often goes into schools, and goes over things with parents, and we are certainly, as parents, navigating a whole new world in technology, and we also know that it's often adults that are most familiar with our kids that can cross those lines, and it feels, those that will take advantage, will take advantage of that gray, blurry line, so I'd love to see that as districts take on that as well.
That's a great idea.
That is a great idea, and also, since the ERZs have come under me, they're going to participate in it as well, because what better regional people around that connection? And so, that's really something we can work on with parents, with them, so.
Thanks. Any tools that parents can get from our experts is helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, were there any questions on PLSB items? Okay, with that, then we'll have, or anything else, we do have a charter board approval, and the floor will be open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. May I approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Ms. Hunter, a motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
Sir.
A second by Mr. Henderson. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. With that, let's take a break, and let Marina do it, and come back at 10:40. We'll come back at 10:40 to start reports. Thank you.
I got an email. I got an email. I can hear it. I had that one. I had that one.
You cleared out this room when they heard you were coming up. I don't know. I don't know how you should take that.
Ms. Whitlow, thank you for coming today. Thank you and your staff for a lot of hard work.
Thank you.
Excited to hear from you and Dr. McGee and Watson Chapel.
Thank you. And it's exciting to say good morning. Typically, I'm saying good afternoon, right? So, Sheila Whitlow, the Director of Office of Coordinated Support and Service. And I do have Watson Chapel here and excited to have them be here to talk to you today about the work that's being done. I did want to share with you though that the Office of Coordinated Support and Service, our team has gone on site to just do. We're not providing that direct support since they hired the external partner. But we did want to go in and make some observations based on our concerns from last year. And so I wanted to share with you that one of the key things, you know, that we were concerned about was the safety. And we were very pleased with what we saw as far as safety and security. They have a new security team on site. And those concerns that we had expressed to the district have been addressed. They're continuing to work on it, but we are seeing some improvement. And so we were really, we were pleased with that for sure. The second thing we did was go into classrooms and we visited all of the schools and most of the classrooms in those schools. We're seeing learning targets on the board. We're seeing the evidence of high quality instructional material. We were seeing the focus, more focus on teaching and learning. Our concern is though continued, is the rigor and the lack of rigor in instruction. And the team at the district is very aware of that. And they're going to continue that work and support, providing the support from the Bailey Group as well as their own district has hired some instructional facilitators for each of the schools that's working with them as well. The seniors do have full schedules. However, we did learn, and this was actually an aha for us as we walked, that those schedules don't include instruction always. So, we have some library aides and some other classes that the students are in. So, they're working on that. So, when we interviewed the students and I talked to seniors, I said, "So, you have full schedules?" "Yes." And so, "What do you do during those classes?" And then they shared with us some things that Dr. McGee now is going to address. So, a full schedule means a full schedule, right? So, we're clear on that. The transcripts have been reviewed and they're continuing that review. So, Dr. McGee will share with you today the work that they're doing on transcripts because that was another concern for us when we went in last year. And finally, after speaking with the support group that's there, they did share with us that the people that they're working with, the staff there at Watson Chapel are being very cooperative. And there is, like I said, I want to emphasize that there really is a feel of a move toward focus on teaching and learning. And there was structure in the building. So, Dr. McGee will be here to tell you the work that's going on. If that's okay.
Thank you, Ms. Whitlow.
You guys have to get so quiet. I feel like I'm in trouble. Well, good morning, everyone. I'm Keith McGee, the superintendent of Watson Chapel School District. And I'm pleased to be here to come before you to give our update. I have in the audience with me the new Executive Director for Correctional Instruction, Ms. Instruction, Ms. Tracy Holland. Also, I have several board members that are very, they're watching this on live stream. Most of our board members work, all of them work to be honest with you, so they couldn't be here today. I'm very pleased to be here to kind of give you the update. I'm not going to go through this quickly. These are goals here that we're going to purpose of while we're here today. Just kind of highlight what's going on, but also talk about the continuous plan that we have. But more importantly, review to our systems, practice and our processes so that we can get better as a learning institution. So, as I think about Watson Chapel and I feel like this is a pattern for me. Hopefully, this will be the last pattern, jumping in so late in the year. Being coming in in late July, early part of July, but just in the nick of time. Watson Chapel, we have some great things that are going on. We are doing something that's good. Our school board is very, very supportive, have a strong focus on safety, but also very strong focus on academic improvement and the overall improvement as a school system. Our ROTC program, we don't talk about it enough. We have over 300 students, middle school and high school in the junior ROTC program. We have quite a few, as you mentioned, you talked about it earlier, dedicated staff. I'm very positive and very pleased with the staff. They're very passionate about Watson Chapel and the success of Watson Chapel in terms of educating children. However, again, we just got some challenges that we got to continue to raise the expectation. I'm going to go through this, that our community is very, very cooperative, very supportive. Our juvenile court, Judge Ernest Brown, provides numerous resources. I've been in the school system where we didn't have mental health agency. We have multiple, multiple agencies that can provide their support external, not only to our students, but also to our families. And then they also push in inside our school district. You know, that Pine Bluff has a history about the violence. I am very pleased about the safety. You heard Ms. Whitlow talk about how safety is our primary focus. Where I'm very pleased with the group violence initiative that we have in the Pine Bluff, that that violence in our school district has dropped tremendously so far. As I reviewed that data, the discipline data, fighting was one of the key things. This time last year, I was looking at the data, I think we had like 39 fights. We only had like four. We have four now. And we're being more proactive versus reactive so that kids can learn in a learning environment, teachers can teach in a learning environment. We have again, distinguished alumni, strong legislative support. Here's a couple of things I really want to highlight that is really going on that I'm very pleased. We have kicked off a new initiative called the Wildcat Store. Their store is there to provide that community support for all of our students and their families. And we have a lot of community partners with this. We're launching this before the holidays that we'll be able to meet their needs. One of the things that we tackled, I had to tackle when I got hired, was the dress code. Students felt like the dress code was a barrier that caused them to not learn. They were only school district in the dress code, required to come to the dress code. Some kids in it, some kids not. All of the inconsistency. So, we eliminated that barrier. But there was also some concerns that we didn't have some support for students and families who may be in need. That's what the Wildcat Store is designed for. If you looked at that, if you look at our fantastic file, we highlight everything that we try to focus weekly on some things that we're getting better at. More important, we try to do as instructional, but also our students. Our students deserve to be recognized for the efforts that they're doing to get better. And I'm pleased that even when I meet with students regularly, I just met with my group two days ago. Thirty kids is on my student leadership council from nine through 12. Two of my students came up and as I was in the school yesterday, said, "Dr. McGee, I don't know the requirement to get on your council." Because that council is what I call helped me transform this school district. They represent the student body, that's their voice. But I want to be involved. And of course, me being educated chest times, and them said, "Why are you not in class?" And then when they explained, I said, "How can I get involved?" Of course, I told them, "Since you was bold enough to come ask me, you are now involved." And I'm supportive of that. And of course, we know about our high school that we're building. So, how do we get here? You guys know about the journey here, September of last year, October. We received the official notice and now in the spring, we hired the Bailey Group. So, academically, I'm not going to touch through all of them. Sure, we provided a handout to you that you may have read. But I would tell you, the biggest thing that we're shifting to is a culture of learning. Focusing on learning from the staff and the students, including making sure that we are teaching the essential standards, but also using high quality instructional materials, being able to raise their rigor and really progress monitoring where the currently students are at that moment to grow them. The ultimate goal is to improve literacy and math by seven percent by the end of this year. So, in order to do that, we got to be structured enough and we got to have a key focus. The couple of things that we also do is that we got again, real emphasis on reading. As you're aware, that you may, some of you may recall, I'm very big on reading. Having reading initiatives. Those students that I call my student leadership council, we're educating them to go down to be readers to our elementary. We want to model that for them. So, a couple of things that you talked about, and Ms. Whitlow talked about the high school transcripts, the auditing. We are now auditing those high school transcripts. The Bailey Group is providing that support through us throughout the everything. Do you see the federal programs, operation, content, and of course, the instruction? And then I've also again held the community forums. Since then, since my hiring, yesterday was my 90th day on the job. I want to say that for a reason. Because we're making the shift. We didn't have central office support to support the instruction. We're now starting that transition, that shift to really from the district level all the way down to the each classroom, making the shift. And we do that by intentionality, make sure that we hire somebody to lead that work. Learning walks, I won't go into a lot, but I can tell you since July the 9th, let me back up, since August the 19th, we've conducted over 300, I think right around 335 learning walks. The thing that we do with that data is that we're looking at and we're being intentional, how do we make sure that learning is occurring in every classroom with the essential standards, using the HQIM? And that's where we, as a district, we plan our professional development to train not only our teachers, but our leaders. We know that the instructional facilitators, we now have learned that in our learning walks, it was surprise to us that we learned about our seniors didn't have, we knew they had a full schedule, but they were monitors. I want to be completely transparent. So, that's how we learn those things. But as we learn, we make those adjustments and we keep again intentionality. Our human capital, the biggest thing I want to touch on is that we have a significant number of 1240 waiver teachers. Wireless is fine, and every classroom can have a teacher. But we also have, got to have a support for those teachers who don't know their content. We're getting better to We're getting better to use, create a structure that we can support those 1240 waiver teachers in the content, but also put them on a pathway that they receive, that get licensing. We continue to look at our human capital, making sure that everyone is teaching in a licensed area. We've already covered some of that already by shifting teachers who weren't teaching to put them in their classes that they're licensed in. As we look at the family community engagement, I've held several community forums. And this is kind of, again, I've only been there for 90 days, I feel like I've been working for two years. But we also focusing on how we strengthen our district and schools by having community partners. We're very, very pleased about the new partnership with Junior Achievement Arkansas, which is going to help their career technical education in terms of workforce readiness. Providing those internships and apprenticeship programs when they get the seniors. This is a K-12 initiative. In the elementary, we go down to teach lessons on these careers at their grade level. We have the professionals coming in along with our students. When they get to middle school, we started sixth grade really being intentional, exploring them with those career. So start working with them on the development of their student success plans. When they get to eighth grade, we want those plans to be done with integrity, not just fidelity, but integrity. So that when they go into high school, that is driving their pathway. We're looking at an analysis of our career technical education program, and we're very comfortable that we'll be okay with that. Again, we continue to work on our partnership that we want to develop. Hopefully, next time we come, we'll have an announcement with the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff. Quickly, student support. We do have somebody that really focused on their student support. We're making sure those roles are clear and concise, but also that the support is there to serve all of our scholars. At every learner, if it's a special education, as well as a gifted, we want to make sure that role is there. We are looking at, we've already started our MTSS, multi-tier assistance support, school teams. As well as we continue to make sure that the integrity of our student success plans. Transportation was one of the key things. We are looking at an analysis of our transportation, how we can collapse those routes and reassign and save the district a lot of money. When I started, we had 26 bus drivers. Honestly, that's a positive to me, because I've been in school districts where you couldn't find no bus drivers. That's a positive. But at the same time, trying to be physically sound and financially sovereign, we did collapse and make sure that we collapsed those routes, but also have sub-drivers so that kids can get to school. And lastly, with the district operation and governance, our board, again, has continued to make strong ways with this because we continue to work together in terms of training our board. But also that it's our priority, because we'll do strategic planning so that we can have the priorities and we align our budget to go with that as well. And so some of our next steps, we continue to, one of the barriers that I learned when I got there, we have to strengthen our communication. That we just weren't communicating effectively top-down. So we now have two ways of how we communicate district-wide. We sent out a weekly communication, weekly reminders, what we call them, for every department from central office. But we also teach them how to do memos. We also just trying to create a culture where there's an open door policy from every building. Where teachers feel like they have a voice, the staff have a voice, that we learn to listen and really support, more important, our students and our parent community. Again, our board is going to be moving to phase two, continue to work on our strategic planning, developing our mission, revise our mission, our vision, core values, and our priorities for this year. And we'll also continue to work on our professional training, building the capacity of all of our staff for operations, as well as more important, in my opinion, academics, because they both work together. But, and recruitment retention, how do we recruit and retain? We're losing a lot of staff. And part of why we're losing the staff is our culture. So we're working on a true recruitment retention plan that we can maintain and retain the staff that we got, but also recruit teachers that want to be in Watson Chapel School District. So with that, that's the end. I'll take any questions for myself or Ms. Holland.
If I could just make a comment before you put Dr. McGee on the hot seat, I just want to thank him for going into that school district with eyes wide open and saying, "We've got to make some changes and do whatever it takes." I don't know if there's any Brene Brown fans out there, but in the book Dare to Lead, one of the traits that she talks about in leaders is that you have to be able to lean into vulnerability. And Dr. McGee has done that, and I think he needs to be applauded for that, because he's not afraid to call our agency, to call the experts, to call the teachers, to call the community and say, "You need to give us honest feedback." He's talking to his students, right? Like, he put together a student council to say, "Tell us what's going on, we can take it." And then we're going to come up a plan to address it. So I just want to thank you for going into a school district that you knew had some systems that needed to be refreshed, right?
It's great.
Or thrown away and rebuilt. And your willingness to do that as a collaborative partner, I know if we continue on this path, we'll start to see some positive outcomes. So just want you to be appreciated. And then the last thing, I'll put him on the hot seat a little bit more. But you've been a superintendent, principal, teacher in this state for a lot of years. And as an active practitioner, as a superintendent, you saw earlier today the action that this board made about getting our assessment system across the finish line. I think the board would like to hear from a superintendent about your thoughts on what we've just accomplished. Is this a big deal or not, or why do we want to do this?
So being a former coach, right, we always talk about, we want to change that momentum. We want to win the game, so we need something that's a game changer, change the momentum. What you have done this morning, and I intentionally got here at nine to hear this. You just changed the momentum for Arkansas, the state of Arkansas in public education. So I commend each of you. For superintendents, you just made my job a lot easier. Because we've been practicing that same thing from terms of making sure everything aligned from essential standards to HQIM to the assessments. That's a game changer for the state of Arkansas, so you need to be applauded. And I want to commend the department under the Secretary of Leavers and Leadership for making that bold change. So thank you, guys.
You're great. Thanks, Dr. McGee. Board members' questions or comments? So, I'm not a coach. Actually, I'm not a very sporty person either, but I'm going to try some analogy here. So, you know, I applaud you for accepting this job. I live in Jefferson County. So I am, I see what's happening in our community with respect to public education. So I feel like you have a marathon ahead of you, and you've taken off at a sprint. Keep me here on my metaphors, am I doing okay? But I also think that you have, like, major hurdles along the way. So I don't know if that's an Olympic sport, but it's like everything combined. What, in your assessment, is the biggest hurdle that Watson Chapel School District has that they need to overcome to be successful in the long run?
Great question. And so thank you for that. I have to remind myself, this is a marathon, not a sprint. My wife reminds me all the time, and my two boys, that you need to slow down. The biggest hurdle is the culture. So the culture of the past. We need to shift the culture. We're not the school district of the past. So how do we shift that culture to address our students in the present, but more importantly, prepare them for the future? And what that takes is a shift in each individual mindset. And I do want to take a moment to applaud my board, and I'm not just saying this because they're my boss. I'm saying it because they are doing it. They have taken that step to say, "We're willing to change." They are very supportive. They are there to say, "No, you tell us, you help lead," and I'm saying that we're going to do it together. Which is going to filter all the way down. So that's what I think is my biggest hurdle. I don't know, Ms. Holland, you agree? But that's what I think.
You shared two numbers that I think were so powerful. The first, the dramatic reduction in fights in the hallways. And then you also mentioned that you had 335, is that right?
Yes.
Learning walks. And I suspect that those two numbers are directly related. Because as your presence is in the hallway, you're signaling to teachers who are signaling to students that they're under a transformation, that this is going to be a different building, a different culture, and a different, you know, even just down to the hallway. So I commend you on that, and I'm excited about the energy and the momentum that you've brought. Being a transformational leader is difficult, but can be very exciting. And so thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to say, it brings back my why. So every time I get into that classroom, I intentionally schedule, every week, I am spending one day that morning, at least three hours inside a class, the classroom. And I even became more intentional, say that we're going to concentrate, we have four buildings and two alternatives, so we concentrate on two buildings so that I can spend an hour and a half in a building. And that intentionality is there because that's why, this is my mission, and this is my passion. So I get, I get extreme joy of my why when I'm in the classroom. And then to have two of my scholars who are seniors to say just yesterday, while I was in the hallway, "I don't know how you selected those kids." "But I wasn't given the opportunity to be on your council. How do I get on?" That brought joy to me, because they're telling, and we have some great kids. And I'm a little selfish, and I'm a competitor too now. I'm going to be honest, I'm a competitor. So I want, why can't we have a Teacher of the Year? Why can't we have, in national merit scholars? I want to increase the number of my third-grade students that's reading on the sixth-grade level. So that's just key. And my youngest son remind me that my playing day is over with. So that's why it's a marathon for me.
I had one other question, and I know this is, you sort of came out on the tail end of some of this strategic planning. There was, at one point in the spring, a bid or a contract or something out for a third-party to come in and help with strategic planning. And it had a cost that felt enormous, like $600,000 or something. Is that, are you still working with that third-party?
I wasn't aware of that. You just brought something to my attention I wasn't aware, so I'm so sorry.
No, I wonder if that means...
I believe that's the partnership with the Bailey Group.
Oh, with the Bailey Group, yes. That's the Bailey Group, yes. We're working closely together with the Bailey Group in all of our systems and from operations to content, to even down to the classroom, the leadership. One of the things that we found, that the Bailey Group does a great job, is really providing that coaching to our leadership, since right now it's only two of us. So that really, the Bailey Group really helps coaches the principals and assistant principals in our structured facilitators. So we kind of do a great job, myself and my team, with the Bailey Group. So when they're not there, then we continue this work, and when they're there, we're all on the same page to grow. So that intentionality, to make sure that we continue to transform, and I'm very proud of the Bailey Group and the work that we're doing together.
That's great to hear, thank you.
And I would say with the Bailey Group too, we always meet with them, but we also debrief. We debrief with me on the leadership, they debrief with Ms. Holland on the content, on the curriculum. And so we kind of talk about our learning walks, what we collected the data, what they saw, and then how we plan our next steps. So every other week, we're training our building leaders and principals and assistant principal, instructional facilitators on how do we get better as leaders inside of each of our schools, along with our co-op. So our co-op is, we have a strong partnership with our co-op, and they do a great job as well. So we utilize and streamline all of those resources together, which helps us a whole lot. So it looked like it's a lot on us, but somehow we can be able to rely on some of the co-op services in the Bailey Groups. Great question. Come in. Thank you.
Superintendent McGee, I met you while back when you were over in Helena. It's no surprise to me what you're doing now. Undoubtedly, you lead with heart, you lead with leadership, you also lead with purpose. So as you mentioned, your first 90 days, I'm not surprised. My question to you, and the secretary kind of touched on it a little bit, the vulnerability of maximizing your resources. You do a great job of staying connected with the staff, you're doing a great job of working really close with Sheila, you and I stay connected. And you know, and that's, that's a hard job in some of the rural areas in which you have that experience, you've worked in rural areas. So my question would be, how do you implant and spread that, that leadership to other rural areas? What's your thoughts on that?
Collaboration. Collaborating with leaders, superintendents, their leaders, their district leaders, but also modeling. And then I think that, and I rely, and I piggyback on my experience from working in a large school system from Little Rock to North Little Rock, even with my experience in Helena. So I got the best, in my opinion, of both worlds. So I think collaboration, but also modeling. You know, I'm just a firm believer that, I say this to my team, the kids can't be what they can't see. Our district can't be what they can't see. So they can't be great transformational leaders if I don't model for them with that. Invulnerability has to be one of that. And that means that, as a superintendent, I don't know it all. So I'm going to call Ms. Whitlow. Look, I need some help with this. I'm going to call Dr. Pride. Look, can you give me some, some feedback? This is what I'm thinking. I'm going to, Tracy and I bounce things off together all the time, excuse me, Ms. Holland. Say, "Look, tell me about, because I'm more, I want to know more about that kindergarten. I don't like what I'm seeing. Am I on the right track or am I off?" So that's what I think would be how you spread it, collaborating with those leaders and how we work together, share. My colleagues over in the Delta, we still collaborate. And I think that's just huge, because we get a chance to talk about what's working, what's not, and we can share those ideas, share resources if we can. So that's what I think.
If I could add to that maybe some thoughts as well, and I'll do my best to use a coaching term for you. But I've heard a term along the way, I don't know where it comes from, but success breeds success, right? So how do we take and spread across the Delta is we're going to have evidence that shows if we focus on the right things, it works. And Dr. McGee just basically told us, one of his biggest challenges is changing the culture in a school district. And I think we have a pervasive culture in a lot of parts in the Delta that there's a ceiling on our students because they can't. And we have to change that culture and say, "These students can and will." And when we create those opportunities and demonstrate that they're some of the most talented students in the state, right here in the Delta, that can become national merits, that can read above grade level. I want to say Lee County, small rural district, last year graduated two kids with their associate's degree at the same time as their high school diploma. If they can do that in Lee County, why can't we do that at every school in the Delta?
That's right.
So success breeds success. We're going to have to rely on great leaders like Dr. McGee and give them the support they need. And we're going to change that culture and mindset that those students can.
And I will say this, that change is occurring, because I still believe that goes back to a belief system. Ms. Weatherford, who's a retired educator from Brinkley, Arkansas, who was my third-grade teacher, who made an impact, who still goes by my mother's house in Brinkley, to say, "I'm just so proud of Key." That's what, I believe, that's what we've got to continue to do. Have that passion that is not about necessarily about money, because we all know that as educators, we don't get paid enough, right? So we're doing it because this is our purpose, this is our passion, this is our ministry, we're minds. I can only speak for me. And that's, I agree with that. And then lastly, I will say to that too, to that last point I wanted to mention as well is that, and I just lost my thought on that piece, but it did come back.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Board members' questions? I had a few. Going to, you know, obviously, you have a lot going on right now. But we do know that achievement, particularly in reading, is very...
But we do know that achievement, particularly in reading, is very low in the district. I saw that there are the high impact tutoring that goes on within school. Um, but I also recognize you have a lot of teachers on waivers. Are you able to provide them, or can you provide them additional support, particularly around reading in those early grades?
Yes. We're using the Bailey Group to help us to provide the support right now with, and because of our calendar, we don't have professional development training, so we train them after, after school for two hours in the content. Uh, the ultimate goal is to have those waiver teachers to get on the pathway to get licensed and start to work on how you continue to grow within the content. Uh, we noticed that when we first got there, that, that support system is not there. So we're working as a district to continue to build that support system that is ongoing.
Those teachers that are on waivers, are they on, under any sort of contract that requires them to get their license within a certain number of years? And do, are they getting any supports to reach that license?
Yes, and I'm gonna let Ms. Holland come forth on that because she takes the lead on those waivers. Yes, but they are, but she can tell you more about that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, oh, good morning, yep. Um, Tracy Holland, um, curriculum instruction with Watson Chapel School District, yes. So twelve forty waiver teachers have been a concern for us, not only because we want to make sure that student outcomes are at the highest we can have, but as well as the support that you're mentioning to, to those teachers. So when we arrived, their contracts were already written for this year. But we have, um, begun conversations with principals through their PGP and making sure that we have the support in place, but then applying a little pressure for them to go ahead and begin the work towards licensure. Cause we want to make sure, and we've, we've talked about a two to three year plan, it's not gonna happen in one year, but we've talked about a two to three year plan that we're going to implement whenever we do, um, put out contracts for the spring for next school year. And Bailey Group coaches are pivotal with that, not only providing some of that support and professional learning right there in the classroom and during their collaborative team meetings, but also in letting, uh, me know through the debriefs that Dr. McGee referenced in terms of big picture professional learning that we need to make sure and employ with, with grade levels or specific groups of teachers. So that is being mapped out right now as well. Um, but yes, we do have a plan to make sure that our twelve forty waiver teachers have support, but are moving towards licensure.
And one thing I would add to that, uh, we do collaborate with, with Ms. Saracini and her staff, Melissa Jacks. So if we can find a way to get a waiver teacher license, that we're looking at that, we are taking advantage of the special education and that pathway that, that was just put out. I think we just identified quite a few of our peer professors that's gonna be going into that initiative, try to address that. Uh, we all know the special education is a hard to fill position. So we have those peer professors willing to go into that, and that's gonna help us out a whole lot as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions or concerns?
Thank you.
Yeah, we really appreciate you all coming in today. Um, appreciate the work you're doing. I know it took a little bit of your time to get here, but it is good to see things growing and moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, Ms. Whitlow, you're coming back again because you're gonna share other work y'all are doing.
Yes. So just wanted to briefly update you on Blavell School District. Our team is there weekly. We have, um, a state leadership coach that's there on the ground at least once, once per week, but then other members of our team are there, providing support in other areas. So I wanted to update you just on what, what's happening now since they, we last met. And, and I do have an exciting number to share with you. Um, last, when we met in, was it August that we were there? September? I mean, July, August, we were in the community. For last school year, there were forty-three direct observations logged district-wide in our EES system for educator effectiveness. And so as of today, we have one hundred thirty-two direct observations that have been logged. And that does not include their PGP meetings as well. So the principals are getting into classrooms. Now, we know that's important, but what are, what are we doing as a result of the data that they're collecting and how are they supporting the teachers? And that's the part that we're working on now, is providing quality feedback so that we can improve instruction. But to what you said, Ms. Keener, about visibility and being in those classrooms, so it's reported that they are having less disciplinary issues because of that, and that makes sense, right? And so it is important. It's important for the, the superintendent to be there, and I walked, uh, last, this week, it's been a long week. I walked this week with Ms. Blankenship, and we visited classrooms in the, in the high school. We saw instruction, we saw the structure of, of their expectations as far as learning. They want learning targets on the board, they want them to be teaching to the, the state standards. We're still, need to work on the rigor of the instruction. And classroom management was, um, a challenge in some of the, the classrooms we were in, because there were brand new teachers. So, um, that particular day, there was actually someone there from the co-op, she's providing direct support, and then they have an employee that's working with the novice teachers. So they are pushing in and providing that support. But, uh, you know, as we spoke about getting in the classroom, you know, what is, what, what, where are you spending your time? And so Secretary Oliva has challenged us, fifty percent of our time, we're focusing on instruction, and that's, that's the goal of our team with our building and, and even our district leaders, focusing on teaching and learning, what's happening in those classrooms, and participating in it, participating in those collaborative team meetings. So fifty percent's our, fifty percent's our goal, our target seventy-five percent of the time. So we're, we're easing into that, because we know that's where we're gonna get the impact. So that was, that was something that I wanted to share with you. Also let you know that they did put out an RFP for an external partner that would be providing support right now to building leaders and also to teachers. And that, that closed this week, uh, they had sixteen responses. So now they'll, they have a rubric, and they will be going through those responses and narrowing it down to two or three providers, that they will bring in for presentations and then present to the board. In addition, and, and then the goal, let me just say this, the goal is that they get started by the end of this month. So they're moving pretty quickly on this. We were excited about the interest across, across the state, and then we had some, uh, other national, um, providers as well that were interested. So that's exciting. And then the last thing that I wanted to share with you about the, the applications that are out was for the superintendent, and we've had ten applicants. So, uh, the board president has been out this week, he'll be back next week, and I think at that time, they're gonna start going through those and vetting those applicants, and the interview process will start. So there's a goal there as well to have a, an interim superintendent in place, and Ms. Blankenship is ready. She is not interested in being superintendent, and she will tell you that. But she's doing what she can to, to continue to lead the district during this time and receiving resport, uh, support from Crowley's Ridge Co-op as, as well as our team. Um, all the licensed staff, unlicensed staff right now are on a path to licensure. Thank you to the support from Harley Saracini's team, and so we're excited about that. And, um, I'll just tell you that last week I went to a board meeting, and I was very pleased. They, they ran the board meeting, um, following the agenda, and you could see evidence of the board that was present, working together. They had very good conversations, and they were asking some very good questions. Board meeting was, was not too lengthy, as it's been reported in the past, that they had very long board meetings. So I was, I was pleased to see that, that it was efficient and, um, ran well. So, and they are working with ASBA to get some training as well. I did speak to, uh, someone from ASBA about that. Concerns, enrollment is down, another ninety-two kids this year. So that is a big concern. Part of that is that lack of stability in the leadership, and we're hopeful that when they get a, a leader hired, that then we'll see some stability and, and, and bring students back. We're also concerned about the, the, as I shared with you, the core instruction happening in the classrooms and, and needing that additional support. So as I, that's why we're moving quickly on this RFP, to get someone in place to support them. So that's all I had to share about Blavell. Are there any questions?
I'm, I'm gonna add to that, cause one, I want to thank, um, Sheila and her team from School Support for being boots on the ground and being diligent in this district, as well as all the other districts that we're supporting across the state. But I almost feel like we're, when we're talking about the state of the state with Blav- Blavell School District, there's two tracks that we're really trying to drive this cycle of improvement on. One is what are the short-term immediate fixes that we gotta put in place right now so that we don't lose another school year? But two, what is this long-term plan, and what is this vision for making sure that we can maintain, maintain this momentum and build out that success? So it, it probably be, would be worthy, and hopefully by this time next month, we'd be able to hear back from the, the board president on where are they at with those two specific processes? But additionally, I will also say to this board, and we may be bringing, um, some additional concerns in Blavell, not just with the public school district, but their charter school. The, the Kip Charter School, right now, is not a high-quality choice program for those families. And I have reason to believe that they're not meeting the expectations that are outlined in their charter. And we need to make sure that we're holding all educational providers accountable to the same level of expectation. So it will be likely that we come back next month and provide an update on that school's performance as well.
The, uh, partnership you're talking about, is that similar to what the Bailey Group's doing with Watson Chapel?
It's similar, the, the RFP was similar to the support that they're getting in Watson Chapel.
Sheila, do you know where those ninety-two students went?
I don't, I apologize, I don't have that number.
Board members, additional questions?
Yeah, I, I, remind me, when we were there in August, like July, whenever it was, um, one of the issues that we found was that, um, none of the first grade teachers were licensed. Um, that was of concern to me, and I brought that up. Was there some shifting around of educators so that at least one on the team could sort of-
They have, I think they have for sure one licensed teacher in that first, first grade. Again, they still have a large number of unlicensed teachers, but we feel like that support that's gonna come in will help with that. But, but there's still a large number, especially in the primary.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. But there are no virtual teachers.
That's right.
Mm-hmm, right, right, right.
Okay, that's interesting.
So they all have teaching-
They're all bodies in, in their room, that's great.
Yes, yes. There are no virtual teachers for those core. I think they, they were looking at a virtual teacher for one of the electives that she, Ms., um, Blankenship shared, uh, when she presented.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think what makes also Blavell special too, and it was very evident when we were there, that the school wants to do better, the students want to do better, and the community wants what's better.
Yes.
And that community support, um, Sheila, I don't know if you want to speak to it, but that has not dwindled.
It has not.
They are very engaged and very excited about the transformational process that we're beginning in their community. So that, kudos to, to the, the community as well.
I think, that's impressive that they attend those board meetings, and they're there as support. And, and I heard from them when I was there about, they're thankful for the work that's happening. And, and know there's a long road ahead, but they're thankful that they are going in the right direction. And, and when we know that, I, I wanted, I do want to add this, um, we know that there have been complaints about overreaching of the board. And, and we've talked to staff members that have said that that is changing drastically. And, and they're thankful for that as well. So the board members are learning their roles and responsibilities, and I believe that as they get the support from the School Board Association as well, we'll see, we'll see that as helpful. So two other things, before I go, I want to talk about Lee County and Helena, West Helena. Next Thursday, ten o'clock at Lee County, we're going to have the ribbon cutting for the teacher housing. So, uh, Dr. Stone wanted to make sure that you guys are aware and let you know that you are all invited to attend. So it's, it's exciting. Uh, it's exciting time. We have four teachers that are now living in the housing, and they're finishing up. We have one set of duplexes that they're, they're, they're just finished up. So, excited about that. And then the wellness area for JF Wall, I'm not sure if, if all of you are aware, they did not have a playground at elementary at JF Wall. So the children would just play in that little area in front of the school with, you know, just, they didn't have anything to, to play with, and it was right, it was by the parking lot. So one of the projects for, uh, Dr. McGee, he's gone, Dr. McGee, we, we worked on, uh, an application for a wellness area using ESR funds. So that, the ribbon cutting for that is gonna be at one o'clock. So we're very excited about that as well, and the students can't wait. So we would love for you guys to attend. And I think that's all.
Yeah. No need for me to, to repeat what's already been said. But I, I definitely want to express my thanks for what you're doing in Blavell School District, and not only Blavell, you know, as a whole, just in rural areas and rural communities, uh, you are certainly making a difference. And I don't think that, it's hard to imagine just how difficult to do that is, and you do it well. So we appreciate you.
I've got a great team.
Yes.
A great team.
Absolutely.
Puts a lot of miles on their vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Whitlow, for coming to us today. I know you're very busy.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it. With that, board reports? Any board members, would any board members like to report on any activities or updates this month? Then we'll go to our favorite board member, Teacher of the Year. No, just kidding. You're not kidding. Teacher of the Year.
Thank you. Hey, Kim, can I get that clicker? Thank you. Had a pretty busy, uh, half September, half October so far, but, uh, started off, uh, at home. Representative Deanne Vought surprised me, as well as Jay Bunner and a couple of other, of, of our administrators by giving us a legislative citation. Um, mine was for Arkansas Teacher of the Year, which I was very grateful for, but we also surprised Jay Bunner. And if you recall on our partnership, uh, Jay Bunner, owner of Bunner Broadcasting, which owns KDQN, which is who our partner is for DQTV, that's created all the work-based learning opportunities. That night was actually Jay Bunner's four-hundredth, uh, Leopard Football Game to broadcast. And so, yeah, if you, if you do the math, that goes back to about the mid-eighties. Um, just a representative, or a representation of a great community member. Um, and, uh, he was very deserving of that award, but, uh, very happy to see that take place, because Jay not only does a lot for our program, but a lot for our community as well. And then, uh, back in September, also got an invite to attend the SAU ERZ Advisory Meeting. Uh, really great opportunity, uh, to meet with, um, some young educators. Got to share my story, but, uh, what was really cool about it, we had twenty-plus preeducators from the Queen on the Zoom, and also a group from Magnolia in attendance. Several of those I noticed were guys, and, uh, I went ahead and asked them, how many of you are actually not just going into teaching, but into coaching as well? Every single one of them raised their hand. And it was a great opportunity for me to share what I've learned, of course, is that great coaches are great teachers, and that the harder that a coach goes in the classroom, the better coach that he becomes as well. And so that, they were, they were really happy to hear that, that's something I believe strong in. And, uh, just great to see a big group of coaches who understood the teaching part of their role as well. And then recently, the Reform Alliance's, uh, Student-Focused Teacher-Led Conference, I got to share my story there. This was a really cool opportunity because you had individuals from public school, from private school, from microschools, as well as homeschooling. Um, able to come to the table and share their stories and share their experiences, as well as some of the challenges that they had faced, and I'm a big believer that some of your best solutions come from when you, uh, bring people from diverse backgrounds and bring them to the same table and listen to their stories. Just a great opportunity there. And then, uh, just this week, got to make the trip up to Pettigame Mountain for the CTE Coordinator's Fall Meeting. Uh, this was a really great opportunity for me in the fact that I got to share our story of work-based learning and partnerships with a room full of individuals who are making those possibilities take place across the state already. But, uh, just a wonderful, wonderful opportunity there, and if you've never been to, uh, uh, went to Rockefeller Institute up there at Pettigame, I highly suggest it. Just a gorgeous setting for a lot of great work to take place. And then, of course, the big news story was just last Friday, Ms. Jeannie Wilcoxen. Uh, we announced her and surprised her as our twenty-twenty-five Arkansas Teacher of the Year. Uh, just a great, uh, environment there with all the kids celebrating with her. I'll let Secretary Oliva tell a little bit about that story here in a second as well, but, uh, it was awesome to see it from that angle, um, uh, as opposed to last year. Last year was a complete blur to me. Being, but, uh, Ms. Wilcoxen, she'll, she's gonna be a great representative. Uh, all four of our- All four of our semifinalists, it could've gone to any of them. We were in their classrooms. They're doing amazing work. And Ms. Wilcoxen, what she's doing in the math, math class of hers is just awesome. And her term, of course, will start July of one, 2025. Until then, you're stuck with me. But that is my report.
Awesome. It's, it's amazing to be able to hear and see what you're doing, but also see the impact you're having on so many across the state, both those teaching now and those that might be teaching in the future. It's awesome. Board members, any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get over to the secretary?
Sure. So just a few comments and wanna thank the board for their action today and the support that, that we receive in making sure we're implementing policy with fidelity and setting those high expectations for improving student outcomes across the state. So I know for us, this is a, it was a major milestone. When you looked at all those different layers that we had to accomplish to get to the top of this kinda educational mountain that starts today with implementing the next steps by defining those test scores is a big deal. And I know the team really appreciates the support and, and I just appreciate them so much for stepping up to the task and, and making today happen. And then I think about people like Carl Smith this morning that we recognize and reminding everybody that it's, it's School Bus Safety Awareness Month. And we, we have our, our students are out in our communities and we need to be diligent and follow the rules of the road and make sure that we keep our students safe. And Beau alluded to the Teacher of the Year announcement with Jeannie Wilcoxen. She's a fourth grade teacher right out here in Pulaski County and has been teaching, I wanna say almost twenty-five years, about twenty-five-year educator. And what makes her special is not only just her passion for her students and improving outcomes, but I always like to look at that evidence of impact. She is consistently one of the highest performing ranked teachers in our state each and every single year by producing more learning outcomes than her students than what we would expect a teacher to be able to do. And she is just gonna be such a joy to have as a representative of, of those teachers on our board. But we have big plans with her to help lead some high-quality professional learning around improving those math paths throughout the state because she truly is an expert and somebody we wanna celebrate. Then if some of you are still around a little bit later this afternoon at one o'clock, it's Competitive Robotics Day in the Capitol. And I think, I know that, that we're gonna try to get some team folks to go visit those students and meet with those teachers. I think they would love to meet some of our state board members as well. It's really not that far from here. So with that, that concludes my updates.
That's awesome. I'm excited to see that. Okay, with that, did we have anyone, anyone sign up for public comment since? With that, any other business to share? We will end our October meeting. I will say, have we confirmed our November meeting date? We'll be in touch.
November seventh.
Okay, so our next meeting will be November seventh. We'll see you all then. Thank you.